Since the December 18th, 2018, meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. First one to master general law, we're recording this meeting for LCAT. And we're also recording it for the minutes. Is anyone else here recording the meeting? Hearing none, we'll proceed. Call or roll, we have Ty Richards, Russ Denver, Luma Robito, John Torsia, and myself, George Kingston. First order of business is to approve the minutes from December 4th. Does anyone have any updates or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, have a motion to approve, so we'll have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll open the continuance of the public hearing on case CN 2018-02, 330 Chestnut Street. And we have a request from the applicant to read into the record, actually two of them.
We have two letters from the Fitzgerald Law Firm addressed to the planning board. Dear Ms. Browders, as you are aware, this office represents M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC with respect to its ownership of parcel of land located 330 Chestnut Street, East Long Meadow. On September 18th, 2018, M&amp;A petitioned the town of East Long Meadow for a new mixed-use zoning district. This petition has been referred to by the town council to the planning board and is currently going through the hearing process. It has come to our attention that the town has treated the September 18th, 2018 petition as one for a zone change for M&amp;A's after-for mentioned parcel from Industrial Garden District to a mixed-use district. M&amp;A has no objection to this treatment by the town, however, the town still needs to amend its zoning bylaws to have a mixed-use district as one does not currently exist. M&amp;A has requested that the town amend the zoning bylaws to include a new mixed-use district by letter petition to the town court of even date said enclosed copy. Consider the same would be required that the hearing currently scheduled for December 18th, 2018, and M&amp;A's September 18th, 2018 be continued until January 15th, 2019, at which time M&amp;A hopes that its petition requesting the new mixed-use zoning district also be scheduled for hearing at the planning board. Thank you for your attention on this matter, and should you have any questions, please contact my office, Jane Mantenawski. I have a second letter from the same law firm. Dear Mr. Florence, as you are aware, this office represents M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC with respect to its ownership of a parcel of land located 330 Chestnut Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. On September 18th, 2018, M&amp;A petitioned the town of East Long Meadow for a new mixed-use zoning district. This petition has been referred to by the town council to the planning board and is currently going through the hearing process. It has come to our attention that the town has treated the September 18th, 2018 petition as one for a zone change for M&amp;A's after-for mentioned parcel from the Industrial Garden District to a mixed-use district. M&amp;A has no objection to this treatment by the town, however, the town still needs to amend its zoning bylaws to have a mixed-use district as one does not currently exist. Therefore, M&amp;A respectfully requests that the town amend the zoning bylaws for the town to include a mixed-use district. This submittal is requesting that this petition for an amendment be put on the agenda of the town council's next meeting. At that time, M&amp;A asks that the town council recommend this amendment to the planning board for a public hearing. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and should you have any questions, contact your office. Sincerely, Jane Mantenawski.
Okay, so do I have a motion to continue to the 15th?
Well, just listening to both of those letters, they freely admit that they need to go to the town council-
Right.
-to have a petition for us to act on.
Right.
So I don't know why we would continue-
Well, we got a petition from the town council to act on. And we interpreted it as to do the zoning bylaw change, okay? But it was advertised as changing the zoning on that parcel. And so the hearing we now have opened really needs to be continued until after we actually draft the bylaw, okay? And I tried to explain this to people back in September, and apparently nobody listened to it. But in any case, what they're saying is they want a second referral from town council for the zoning bylaw change part, and hold in advance the hearing on changing the lot to the zone which doesn't exist yet, okay? That's the way they're interpreting it.
So then I'll just raise this issue. So about a month ago, if my memory serves me correctly, I think we voted an internal policy here that if someone wished to request a continuance, they could not do so with no notice, because it was unfair to people who may show up who wanted to speak to the public hearing. I don't know if we informed the petitioner of that requirement or not, or they chose to not comply with it. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no on the continuance.
Okay. I don't have a motion yet. Will someone make a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Will someone second that? We need to either continue or close.
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion?
So Connie, did we inform the petitioner that they could not do it on the date that we were going to hold a hearing, ask for a continuance?
So an applicant can come to the meeting and petition to continue. You can't dictate to somebody a timeline for a request to continuance. They are allowed to come up to the last minute to make that request.
So I think we went, we talked our way through this issue as it relates to 244 Shaker Road, because they continued to ask for a continuance on the day of the hearing. And I think we did an internal policy that the, if they were going to do it, they needed to request it by at least Friday of the week before.
Well, you know, you may have had that discussion, but you, under the Massachusetts general law, you simply can't tell somebody they can't come to the table and request a continuance.
Any further discussion on this? We're discussing here the issue brought up by the letters, Connie, that the hearing that was advertised and that was opened was supposed to be for changing the zoning on that lot. And that, which of course we can't do because we don't have the zone yet. So they're asking town council to request us to open a separate hearing on the question of creating the bylaw.
So as you know, the petition was submitted, and it was a petition to discuss a mixed-use district. And the particular parcel that was under, that was being regarded for potential mixed-use zoning district was 330 Chestnut Street. So in order to, I guess, address the concerns that were raised by the member of the constituency regarding a violation of the open meeting law, the applicant simply wanted to make sure that all information was above board and thoroughly disseminated so that there would not be a challenge on a technicality moving forward.
So it's by interpretation that the hearing that is currently open is to change the zoning of 330 Chestnut Street. And the hearing that we will open on the 15th, assuming we get a referral from the council, will be for creating the zone in the bylaw.
Well, what is going to town council is an expansion of the request, or an additional, an amendment to the petition, so that you would be allowed to discuss mixed-use zoning, a mixed-use zoning district proposal for the community at large, and also to discuss making that zoning change at that particular site known as 330 Chestnut Street. So it's twofold. So you have two separate-
How many times have I gone through that we have three steps and each requires a hearing? We've discussed this numerous times. So why are we now putting two things into one hearing?
Well, you have, well, you have an open meeting law complaint that-
I understand that. And that's because we didn't advertise it correctly.
Well, it was advertised correctly. But it was advertised because initially, the way that the petition was presented, there was some ambiguity to it, and you were looking at a zoning change specifically for that parcel, 330 Chestnut Street.
There's no way we could look at a zoning change for it if the zone didn't exist.
Right, and that's why you entertained the conceptual idea, the concept of changing that zone. You entertained the concept, moving beyond the specific request for a zoning, a mixed-use, the creation of a mixed-use zoning district at that site, because it was all about that particular parcel.
Okay, so should we in fact close this hearing-
Yes.
...without, and vote to, to drop the subject of the hearing without prejudice, and then open a new hearing that we advertised correctly as having both aspects to it on 15th?
Well, yes, but then you run into a problem, because if you want to create, let's say you want to create a mixed-use zoning district. Great, but if you couple that with that particular site, then you have to start all over again.
Here's the point. We should have a hearing to create the zone in the bylaw. We should then have a hearing to put it on the site. They're two separate things entirely.
Yes, they are, but you had an application, a petition for a zoning change that centered around that parcel, right?
But there's no way we can act on that.
No, because it's actually, there are two parts to it, so-
Yes, and we only advertised one part.
What I would do is I would continue to move forward on the application as it was presented, the petition for, where's our, okay, the petition by the applicant to consider a zoning change at 330 Chestnut Street from Industrial Garden Zoning District to mixed-use zoning district. Keep that, keep that, right?
Keep that open.
Because you are, otherwise you're going to dance around this until you have no resolution.
The question is, we should open a separate hearing on just the zoning, the zoning bylaw change?
An amendment to your zoning bylaw to include mixed-use zoning-
As a separate hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so this hearing is going to get continued and continued and continued until we get that bylaw written.
That's correct. And you can continue it to a date to be determined.
No, you can't. It's got to be continued to a date, date and time.
But you, but then, yes. However, what you would want to do is then have the applicant come back in with their petition and re-advertise-
Yes.
-if you don't give a definitive date for continuance.
Okay.
So that's one way. Otherwise, you can continue, it's similar to tabling things, you know, people, boards will table things, and then at some point they resurrect themselves at a later date. Not the best way to conduct a hearing.
So let's make this perfectly clear. We continue this hearing to a date to be determined and re-advertised-
Yes.
-and we open a new hearing on the zone change.
But that won't come to you until it is recommended by town council.
Right, and then advertised.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm going to rescind my, what I was going to say, and I'll actually make a motion to do that.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the table. Can we amend that motion to say, to a date to be determined and re-advertised?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
That's on the, all those in favor of the amended?
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion to continue to a date to be determined? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It shouldn't be that complicated. Okay, next thing we have is the Fields of Chestnut.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Rick Granger with Dan Rude Associates. We're the developers of the Fields of Chestnut.
This is a new public hearing, so we need to read the notice.
And the notice is, I'm reading right here.
Right here.
Okay, case site 2018-08, the Fields of Chestnut, request by applicant for modification of site plan approval at Chestnut Street Assessor's Parcel 7-5, a 54.12 plus or minus acre site in the planned adult residential zoning district. Applicant Rick Granger, D.R., Chestnut, P.O., Box 823, Summers, Connecticut.
Okay, so tell us what you're going to do.
All righty, so back about 12 years or so ago, we developed the zone with you guys for the adult living, and came up with our master plan for the Fields of Chestnut. And over these years, we've been putting in the different phases of the road. So the last phase is this section back here, which originally was planned to be a through street back to Benton Drive. And over the course of time, we've been in there, we feel that the best for the community in terms of safety and traffic and no cut through and that kind of stuff would be to make this a cul-de-sac with an emergency egress out to Benton Drive, which is this configuration Actually, probably three or four years ago, we went through all this with Robin McDonald, the town planner at the time, and that with the police and fire, and went through all of their questions, concerns, and design issues, and kind of thought that we had put to bed, but I guess it never formally went to you guys, so what we thought was put to bed wasn't. So that's why Connie had us come in with the application. So it's the permanent cul-de-sac with the emergency egress, if the police and fire would have the keys to the gate for coming in and out on. The other thing in the original plan, this was named Silver Lane, and I guess you have a Silver Fox Lane, so they had asked us to change the name to something not so close to another town, street and town, so Clover name was what we came up with there. So the three components was the cul-de-sac with emergency exit, entrance changed from Silver Lane to Clover Lane, and then this is one of the other streets in here, Ribbon Grass Road. And the folks that were the first ones to work on the house for now requested that we rename it Ribbon Grass Lane. So those are the three components of our modification request.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. The emergency entrance there on to Benton, in the wintertime, would that be plowed?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's never ever going to be a restriction other than that gate to get through there for emergency vehicles?
Right, I think that's pretty typical with your other situations.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it just gets plowed, for obvious reasons.
And you actually have two gates shown on the plan.
Yeah, one to keep anybody from going that way, and one to keep anything going that way.
Makes sense. Open up to the public. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, I bring you back to the board. Any additional questions? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have one more question. You said that the emergency vehicles would have keys. Is there also a possibility of some kind of a breakthrough, just in case someone's going, hey geez, who's got the key?
Plus that knock box, they have a whole process of the keys-
Okay, so you're all set with that?
Yeah, it's the way the police and fire wanted it.
Okay, that's fine.
I guess they have it typically set up that way.
I forgot what that was called, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a knock box, yep.
They have the key to the box, and the key is in the box.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that-
Okay, any other questions from the board? They have a motion to close the public hearing, so moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Need further discussion on this? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the amendments? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another public hearing on idle moments massage.
Case MTSP 2018-04, idle moments massage, OOC, request by applicant for a special permit for a massage therapist facility at 10 Crane Avenue, Assessor's Parcel 27-19-0, an .14 plus or minus acres site in the business zoning district. Applicant is Christina Conti, 24 Lingwood Road, East Long Meadow, Mass.
So tell the board what you're trying to do.
I currently work at Escape Therapy and Massage at 10 Crane Ave. She is dissolving at the end of the year, and I would like to open up under my own name as the owner.
And all her licenses and such are in-
Yep.
Are correct, and it's the same business in the same place, basically, with a new name. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, take that to the board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Pretty straightforward, I think. We have a motion to approve the special permit.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you very much, Jonathan.
It'll be a couple of days before you get the decision.
Yes, absolutely. I was just going to say, okay, can you call?
Matt's man. We have an A&R for, Art's Berry Farm.
Case A&R 2018-06, new northwest corner parcel lot, request for endorsement of a plan for which approval is not required at 33.58 acres plus or minus, site located at Parker Street, Assessor's Parcel, ID 91-1-B, Residential A, Zoning District. Applicants are Arthur C. and Grace Valon.
Valon.
Okay, thank you. 172 Sun Ridge Drive, Springfield, Mass.
Thanks.
Catherine, you want to open this site, the A&R?
I'm Dan O'Brien with Smith Associates Surveyors. I prepared the plan for the board.
You can hear me on tape. So they're putting in a new house lot, okay? They got the frontage they need, they got the area they need.
Correct.
My only comment when I first saw this was clearly the 30-foot right-of-way that they're retaining is, will not be sufficient to ever put a subdivision back.
Correct, he's fully aware of that.
He's fully aware of that.
And Art has had his berry farm there for many years, and intends to continue just doing the berries, so.
Okay, fine, just so he's aware of that, because-
There's notation on here, it's not a building.
I know, I saw that, but sometimes people try to come in different ways, and I know the property, so I know you can't get in from the back.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Art, he's land rich and cash poor, and it's just, this is what he needs to do.
Makes some sense, yeah. Okay, any questions from the board on this one? It's pretty straightforward. He's got the frontage. Do I have a motion to endorse the plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, looks good. Happy to see the farm's going to stay there.
Yes.
I like his berries.
I don't know what Art would do with himself without it.
But yeah, okay, so we'll get this endorsed tonight, and we'll pick it up tomorrow, I guess.
Great, thank you very much.
Just give me some time to write that decision, so we'll give you a call when it's ready to pick up.
Sure, that's great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Okay, Belavista Estates, Phase Two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Joe Pacella, I'm here for Belavista. Leon Holvin's the owner of the remaining property of Belavista. And I was invited in by Connie to basically update the board as to what is going on, what's going to happen. I'm the sole owner of that property, but I have had some discussions with Al Joyce, who I'm sure you're familiar with-
Right.
-a local East Long Meadow builder. And it's my belief, and I think it's Al's belief right now, that he's going to continue what we call Phase Two. Phase Two is 17 lots, starts with Lot Number Nine, and it runs around Prospect Street, where there's an old red house that's going to get knocked down-
I know it well.
Right across from you.
Look at it every day.
And then it comes back, it comes back to Lot 25. We fully intend to comply with all the conditions that the planning board issued back in 2011, I think. We may come back to you, and if we do, we don't know yet if that's going to happen, we may come back to you and ask you to do the same thing that you allowed on the southern end of the subdivision, and that would be to put in a temporary cul-de-sac and do half of it at one time, rather than the whole thing. As you can see, 13 lots took seven years, and there actually is still one lot that's uns, two lots that are not spoken for in the first section. But that's something for the future. We'd come back to you if that decision, if Al decides that that's something that he would want to do.
Okay.
So other than that, I'm open to any questions. I know there were some, evidently some conservation issues, but they pertain to, I believe, lots three, four, and six, and those are not owned by Belavista, they're owned by Kent Peacock and Sons Construction, and he has nothing to do with this project any longer.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Right ahead.
There's huge piles of dirt and everything else right across the street from my house. I was like, what's, when's that going to go away? Help me up with that.
That dirt was loam that was stripped off of lots one, three, and six. Kent, as part of our arrangement in separating, our divorce agreement, Kent had until December 15th to remove that loam.
I saw him there Saturday, in and out all day long with trucks.
This past Saturday?
Yep.
The trucks going off-site?
Yeah, they're loading up trucks and taking dirt off.
Okay, well, that's going to stop, and that loam will be redistributed over the remainder of the property. And it's gone down quite a bit, I think.
It's been a lot better than it was, but I'll be happy when it's done. Been like that for a long time.
Is the plan still to be doing the same class of houses that have started?
They're going to be, they're going to be nice houses. I mean, we'd like to try to keep them at a little more affordable than some of the houses in there, but what happens is someone comes in and buys a $500,000 house, and then extras it up to 800,000 or 900,000.
Yeah.
Sometimes before they know it.
Yeah.
So we can, you know, we're going to do as best we can with the market.
But it'll be consistent with the, I mean, you say consistent, it will-
Not going to be, it's not going to look like two different subdivisions.
Okay.
Belavista has control, design control.
Okay.
So before, if we were to sell one lot to a particular builder, or if Al were to take over, and he were to sell it to a builder, he would have that design control.
Okay.
And I think it's important to the landowner to keep it consistent.
Yeah.
Because that adds value, not only to the people who've already bought, but to the people who are going to buy.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern is maintaining the value for the people who've already built there and put their money in the ground, you know?
And the guys who live across the street.
And the, yeah. The affordable houses across the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
See nice homes over there.
So we don't need to take any action on this tonight? No?
I believe all of our permits are in place.
Okay.
The covenant that you issued back in 2011 or 2012 is still in place. You partially released the lots that are there now, the 13 lots, but the other 17 lots, lots I'm talking about this evening, are subject to that covenant, so they cannot be sold individually-
Okay.
-until the road is in, until a bond is posted for whatever is not done, when the infrastructure goes in.
I will advise you that as a result of changes in the management of the Department of Public Works, we will no longer be doing partial releases of bonds, okay? Just so you're aware of that. There, and I'm looking over the history of subdivisions, not yours specifically, they've decided that partial releases of bonds are not in the best interest of the town. And so they're not going to release, authorize the release of bonds until everything is where it's supposed to be on the infrastructure side, so.
Or bonded.
Or, well, they will release-
Or the release of the bond, yeah.
Yeah, you release the covenant in lieu of a bond, but they're still going to want to have debt protection, okay? In the past, we had done partial releases, as you mentioned, when, as the roads got built, and they've found that that is not necessarily in the best interest of the town, so.
What you did with Belavista was, when we first got started, there wasn't an amount that DPW had agreed upon.
Yeah.
So you gave us a partial release for Lot Seven, which was the first lot that we sold.
Okay.
Then the rest of the lots were released at once.
Yeah.
And we posted a couple hundred thousand dollar bond.
Yeah, okay, makes sense. Yeah, okay, makes sense. Any questions? Thank you for coming in and talking to us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so just looking at the partial release from the subdivision bond, it pertains to Phase Two, so we might want to see a new, excuse me, Phase One.
It doesn't, it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect all the remaining land.
But the way it was drawn up, though, everything references Phase One.
But it lists in there the specific lots.
One, two, three, four, five, six, eight, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30.
And it specifically excludes the lots, I mean, your covenant is on there.
Yeah.
Nobody can sell an individual lot at this point.
But, so, in also looking at the DPW's estimate, it two accounts for Phase One, so we may need to redraft the covenant for Phase Two, so that there's no confusion 50 years down the road.
I think, I think if you look at it, you won't, you won't need a new covenant. What you will need, at some point, when the base code goes in on Phase Two, and the infrastructure goes in, you will need an additional bond for Phase Two.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so.
That's often the.
But unfortunately, as, as the chair was just saying, so right now, that, that surety for Phase One is negative, is minus $132.44. So, there's no bond in place for Phase Two, nothing for Phase Two, so you're probably going to want to ask the DPW to provide a cost estimate for the completion of Phase Two.
The Phase Two is under covenant now.
Just going forward, you're going to want to have that cost estimate for Phase Two that's current.
We should get that when they want to go to bond from, from covenant, okay? Because we don't know when they're going to want to go to bond, it depends on.
Weather.
On, when these, when they start, want to start selling houses, I mean, when, when somebody comes in and wants to buy, buy a piece of land, until then, they're not going to go to bond.
Right, I, I understand.
But I think you're saying the same thing, I think you're just talking about a timing issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely come to you, whether it's myself or it's Mr. Joyce, we'll come to you, after the infrastructure is in and after the base code is in, and we'll go to DPW, and they'll estimate.
Yeah.
What they need for the second bond.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have here a open meeting law complaint from a citizen of the town, which I think you've all seen.
Oh, who was that?
It doesn't really matter who filed it, the point is that the agenda, the posting was, the advertisement was to consider a zone change at 330 Chestnut Street. This board decided, or determined, that we could not do that until we had a definition of the district, and so we started talking about the definition of the district, and this individual thought that we had overstepped our bounds because that was not what was advertised, is that correct?
By the way, should I read this into the record?
Sure.
Open meeting law complaint, complaint filed with the Office of Attorney General regarding case ZN 2018-02, 330 Chestnut Street, petition by applicant to consider a zone change at 330 Chestnut Street, Assessor's Parcel 18-38-0, a 40.35 plus or minus acre site from Industrial Garden Zoning District to Mixed Use Zoning District. Applicant's agent, attorney Jane Mantilowski, Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law, PC 46 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Guess that's it.
Well, you may want to read the complaint.
Yeah, that wasn't much of a.
And the action that is requested.
Okay, an agenda was posted stating a public hearing was being held to consider a zone change at 330 Chestnut Street from Industrial Garden Park to Mixed Use District. This description is not an accurate representation of the discussion at the meeting. The town of East Long Meadow does not have a mixed-use district, the Planning Board, thus, its chairman decided that instead of discussing the zone change by the applicant, they would instead discuss the creation of a mixed-use district by the planning board. I believe this is in direct violation of the open meeting law. The planning board continued the public hearing to 12:04:18, and once again, only discussed the creation of a new mixed-use district by the planning board. And the planning board should immediately notify the applicant that the zone change could not occur because that type of zone does not exist currently in the town of East Long Meadow, and given, and give them the option of withdrawing their request, or immediately vote to deny their request on the basis that the zone does not exist. Any further meeting posted should state that the planning board is creating a mixed-use district, and a public hearing on this should be held.
Okay. So, I think we've, we've done a lot of this, okay? We've just talked about holding a, a separate hearing to create the, to create the bylaw under which this, this zone would operate, and we're waiting for town council to refer that back to us. We're, rather than denying it without prejudice, we are continuing it to a date uncertain to be readvertised, okay? So I think if you could draft up something like that to the attorney general and the applicant, and not the applicant, the complainer, that should, that should do what we need to do. Any further thoughts on that? I mean, we just spent some time discussing this. Makes sense?
Yes, makes perfect sense.
May I ask the, if anyone would like to comment on that course of action?
I think that's a good course of action, Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Okay, we can work on the draft together if you want, if you want to draft something up, I'll take a look at it.
That's, yes, that's fine, does, does the complainant want to withdraw his complaint?
No.
No?
We, we respond, we respond to him, okay? And, and also to the attorney general, and at that point, I guess, he can appeal, or do, make another complaint if he's happy.
All right, sounds good to me.
Okay. I mean, there's this course of action here if, if the complainant is not satisfied, okay?
We can ask him, right?
Well, I'm not going to ask, ask him to commit on, on camera, it's up to him to decide. He needs to see our, he needs, he can't really comment until he sees our written reply, okay? So, we'll do that. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Does that have a procedural question?
Sure.
So I've noticed that we've started advertising our legal notices in the Republican rather than the reminder, so what's the thought process on that?
The reason behind that is the reminder is a weekly publication, and typically, it's about four weeks out before you can get an, add in the reminder and meet the deadlines. So, it, so with the Republican, you can submit the ad three days in advance of the publication date, and I am exaggerating by the reminder four weeks, but the, I will remind the board that several of our, our meetings were not duly posted by using the reminder. So we have found it to promote efficiency in government and to provide our applicants with faster response, we've gone to the Republican, in processing their applications, it just, because when we miss a deadline, then we have to continue the case, so you find that you're, you're continuing, you're moving these applications out farther and farther. So I have found that in managing the office, that this is a more responsive way of addressing the applications that are coming before the planning board.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're very welcome.
Does that also show up then in Mass Live?
Mass?
Mass Live on the website, the Republicans' website, Mass Live.
I would believe that it does, because it's an electronic newspaper, I mean, what do you have in your?
Have you seen it?
I saw, I saw it, you know, and I checked it online, I saw it, yes.
Thank you, Catherine.
So it's, in that way, it's more available than it was easily in the reminder.
Oh, yeah, you can just Google it and find out, you know, look for the particular topics.
So the, the Springfield paper bought the, the reminder this past year.
Yes.
So are the rates the same, similar?
No, the rates are not the same, fortunately. There's a higher price point for the Republican, but again, it's a service that we provide to our applicants that moves them through the, the process quicker.
So is that normal that we pay the advertising costs and not the applicant?
No, the applicant pays the advertising cost.
Okay.
Yes, directly, the, in both cases, the reminder and the Republican, they bill, bill the applicant directly.
Okay, thank you. We only have to pay for the stuff that we initiate.
And that's also for all of the boards, just so that, you know, if there are any questions, and of course, the official posting site is the library monitor screen, that's where, that's the go-to, that was adopted by town council as the official posting site, but under open meeting law, we still have to advertise in a newspaper of general circulation, and of course, the agenda is also uploaded to the agenda in minutes website, as well as the, the marked agenda following the meeting. Catherine recently was given the instruction from IT on how to upload that, I had been sending things to IT, and they, they would get to it as quickly as they could, but sometimes they had other, more critical technical IT matters to address than uploading our marked agendas, so we're trying, you know, we're moving as quickly as we can to get information out to the public, and of course, they can always call and say, hey, how did that vote go last night, which is the old school way of doing things, people would call.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for the schedule.
You're welcome.
Now, the business to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.